Good evening, if I could call this meeting to order please. Thank you for your attention. We're going to call the meeting to order now and at this time I'd like to call upon Commissioner Basilio Chino Sanchez to deliver our invitation for us.
I'm very proud of this guy, our city commissioners, the mayor, the mayor, the officials, for the benefits of the citizens, our veterans, our childrens, to the entire community, to their whole hearts. You've been asking your first step of doing all the rights in your name, we ask of you, we come, we thank you for a very, what a precious thing that.
Now please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everybody, we're, uh, thank you for being here tonight. Welcome all of our visitors, we're glad to have you here at our meeting. Uh, we were delayed a little bit because we had another joint meeting with our community improvement board, uh, in executive session before, uh, we began, we ran a little bit long, so thank you for your patience. This time we'll go to item number one, which is the public announcement of events.
Good evening Mayor, Commissioners, Citizens of Harlingen. We're going to announce the next events we will have. For November Monday, November 11, we'll have the Veterans Day event at 11:00 a.m. in Veterans Memorial Park, Pelletown Park. Friday, November 22nd, the HEV Thanksgiving Fest at the Harlingen Community Center at 11:00 a.m. Thursday, December 5th, a Royal Holiday Lighting at McKelvey Park at 6:00 p.m. Friday, December 6th, Christmas Parade presented by the RGV Jaycee Jackson Street Downtown. And Saturday, December 7th, Fun Dash 5K presented by Mid Valley Events at Royal Park, McKelvey Park. Thank you, those are the next events that we will have in this mail and the next mail. Thank you, Harold.
Thank you, Harold. Uh, item two is board recognition for what we have.
Yes, we do, we do.
I'd like to scan. Well, we'd like to recognize now our board members, incoming board members, we have two, uh, with the Harlingen Proud Advisory Board Rebecca Rios, Indiana Sparks, uh, dear, dear, come on out please. What we'd like to do is face Charlie, because he's going to take your picture. Remember, we want to thank you for agreeing to serve on our Harlingen Proud Advisory Board, one of our very, very, really very important boards that's done so much for our community and, uh, Indiana Sparks, we want to thank you too for agreeing to serve on this board, you know, Harlingen does so much to be of our community and that's an important part of what we're trying to do. And Harlingen just, uh, last two weekends ago, we had hundreds of TSTC students went out to mine, beautification projects, landscape projects around our community, uh, working with Harlingen Proud, and then just last Saturday, they're bash, so, uh, everything we guys do is great, thank you so much for agreeing to serve in that pool.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Bonnie Gonzalez, the life, uh, has agreed to serve on our library advisory board and again, our library is a great asset for our community, we had a great recognition, uh, on the day of the night to recognize, uh, her sponsor for all he has done, uh, for the library and for Rock to Buy and all of the great things our library does for the community. Thank you for agreeing to serve and to be a good steward of our library.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Danny Spear, Danny has agreed to serve on the municipal auditorium advisory board. And we want to thank Danny for agreeing to do that. Uh, so, a beautiful new post Dolly auditorium and we want to see if they can pair up and utilize the best as we can, so Danny, thank you so much. And, uh, then our homes with the Veterans Advisory Board. So our newer advisory boards, we appreciate their all work, but thank you for your service as a veteran, so thank you for what you're going to do for that better advisory board. Ronnie Gonzalez, outgoing member of Harlingen Proud, I don't see him here, so we'll go on to the next item. Item three, proclamation proclaiming November 2013 as National Hospice and Pelative Care Month. And if Jennifer Leal is a little rare, bye. Okay, well you're, obviously you're not Jennifer. Alon Perry Allen. For his hospice and palliative care provide the highest quality of care to patients and families and bring comfort, love and respect for all those they serve in the communities across the nation. And whereas hospice care and palliative care providers take time to ask what's important to those who are caring to listen to what the patients and families say. And whereas hospice and palliative care professionals, leading physicians, nurses, social workers, therapists, counselors, health aides and clergy providing comprehensive and professional care that make the wishes of each patient and family a priority. Whereas pain management and symptom control, caregiver training and assistance, emotional and spiritual support, allowing patients to live fully up until the final moments, surrounded and supported by the faces of loved ones, friends and community caregivers. And whereas the provision of quality hospice and palliative care reaffirms our belief in the essential dignity of every person regardless of age, health or social status and in every state of human life deserves to be treated with the utmost respect and care. And whereas every year more than 1.6 million Americans living with life-threatening illness with their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs and communities throughout the United States. And whereas more than 468,000 trained volunteers contribute 22 million hours of service to hospice program annually. And whereas hospice and palliative care providers encourage all people to learn more about options of care and to share their wishes with family, loved ones and their healthcare professionals. And therefore act responsible, the mayor of the city of Harlingen, by virtue of the authority vested in me, on behalf of city commission, to hereby encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life and to observe this month with the appropriate activities and programs and proclaim the month of November 13th as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. I want to present that to you and thank you for all you do to promote, uh, this important, uh, work in our community. Would you like to say anything?
I just, uh, thank you Mayor, thank you President Commissioners, uh, for having us up here and accepting the proclamation. And our main goal is just to improve the lives of as many people as we can, uh, to have them, you know, live the end of days with dignity as best possible.
Great, thank you very much. Item four is a presentation regarding the recent community-wide beautification efforts on National Make a Difference Day, Saturday, October 26, 2013.
Good evening Mayor and Commissioners, City Manager and citizens of Harlingen. We had a very exciting special project a couple of weeks ago where we partnered with Texas State Technical College as well as Harlingen Proud to do six different landscaped areas across the whole entire city. In addition to that, we had another volunteer group that worked at Victor Park and painted a lot of the entrance and really did a great fuck facelift. What is National Make a Difference Day? National Make a Difference Day is the largest national day of community service and millions of volunteers around the world unite in a common mission to improve the lives of others. At Victor Park, like I said, we had 120 volunteers from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. They painted a lot of the bollards and all, a lot of the posts and cable, they painted some scorekeeper stands, they painted even some trees, I guess, there, I see them. And you can see they painted a lot of curb stops, so the front entrance to Victor Park is painted very nicely with a white paint. And then the other big project we had with over 180 volunteers from TSTC and over 750 plants took place at six different areas. I'd like to thank Harlingen Proud, Nick Consiglio is here with Harlingen Proud, I'd like to thank him, they actually funded all of these plants and improvements. Dixieland Park, you can see there the entrance on either side, we put beautiful Texas fire bushes. At Rangerville Road Park, there, up to the upper right-hand corners are brand-new pavilion that was purchased through CDBG funds. So we went in and we planted hibiscus all around the ornamental fenced areas and you can see the next slide, it's just a great difference there, it's beautiful out there now. We're going to irrigate the entire area and have grass grow in, it's going to be really nice. At Royal Park, we did some improvements around the sign as well as we did some improvements to the entrance to the area. You can see there, small improvements but really improvements that make, make a difference. McKelvey Park, the new restroom we have, we actually landscaped all, all along each wall of the, of the building there. And then La Boyan Community Gardens, this is a flagship program that TST started about seven years ago, but you can see over the, over time, a lot of the weeds and plants grew in, so this day, they went in and they cleaned it and then they replanted the beds. Finally, the largest project we had that day was at Memorial Middle School. The street here to the left is Rio Hondo Road, there was about 570 linear feet of fencing, it was a six-foot chain link fence, it really was a distractant from the school. So we had local neighbors that said, hey, we really want to do an improvement, so we came up with the idea of planting about 175 yellow esperanzas which will really grow in nice and block the fence. And we planted nine oak trees out there. There's the final product, so that one that we're really proud of. So all in all, it was a great day, lots of volunteers and good community improvements. Thank you.
There's really a lot of, there's really a lot of teamwork going on there because you had, uh, the, the community partners, the Church of, uh, Latter-day Saints, you also had the TSTC students, uh, our staff, the city staff, working together, Harlingen Proud, working together, all making, uh, a real difference to the community and those, uh, as we, as, as you, everybody knows, I like to talk about those landscaping projects, beautification projects really do enhance our, our community, it was great to see all those young kids out there at, uh, at Rangerville Park and what a difference it made. We want to recognize at this time, uh, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, uh, if you're, if you went out there and helped out, we have a certificate for you, we want you to all, uh, come up here or be a representative to us. Come on up, come on up here. All right, come on up here and let your, uh, try to come over here and face that way, tall, tall people in the back, not as tall in the front. And squeeze together like, like you like each other. And here we go.
Okay, I'm going to count to three, one, two, three. I'm going to do it again.
All right, we, we really do, uh, want to, the entire city division, I want to express our appreciation to you, uh, for doing such an important thing in our community. I told those TSTC students that I wanted to talk to at Rangerville, uh, that day, that you know, what you're doing isn't just planting a few plants and making it look nice, you're really helping our community, uh, because when you, when we take care of ourselves, it's like taking care of our own appearance, it's like taking care of our own home, that's what we're doing, if we want to take care of our home, we want to make our city and our community, uh, look good, be inviting to people, make people want to come into our community and invest in our, our community. So it does, it's so much more than just a few plants and it's the pain, it's the overall effect that it has and what you've done is a great service to our community, we want to thank you and there are too many certificates to announce everybody's name, but I'll make, I want to make sure that I give these to, uh, one, somebody, uh, to make sure that you get, you get them out to everybody and to express our appreciation to each and every person that participated on that, thank you. Do you want to say anything?
Uh, no, I'm just very proud of these kids, they did unawes- uh, I think they're going to stop working. I think they want to go on and on, so I'm really, really proud of them.
Thank you so much, congratulations. The next item is item five, the approval of the minutes of July 12, 2013, a joint special meeting of the city commission and Harlingen Improvement Board. B, August 27, 2013, joint special meeting of the city commission, Harlingen Improvement Board, Development Corporation, Harlingen, October 2nd, 2013, regular meeting, October 16, 2013, regular meeting, and October 21st, 2013, special meeting, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve all, all five sets of minutes?
So moved.
Second. If all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries, minutes are approved. Items 6A through E consent agendas, motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item seven, consider to take action to approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance, sale and delivery of City of Harlingen, Texas General Organization Refunding Bond Series 2013, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of annual level on tax, approving and authorizing a paying agent register agreement, escrow agreement, official statement and all other instruments and procedures related to issue. Good evening, City Manager and, uh, and I'd like to present.
Mayor, at the, at the previous city commission, we talked about, uh, an opportunity to refinance some old bonds that we have. At this point, we have Ann Berger, Antrick, in the managing director for First Southwest, that's going to tell, tell us about a good opportunity for this evening.
Great, thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, Mr. Uraina, it's a pleasure to be before, before you again this evening. Before I actually start the presentation, I'd like to take just a moment and introduce two other people who are here on the side in this evening. First of all is Noel Valdez, who is your bond counsel, with McCall, Perkhurst and Horton. And we also have Duncan Loro, who is with Southwest Securities, the firm that had the low bid for your consideration this evening. As we always do in the process, we work with the rating agencies to go through the rating agency process in looking at the rating for where the city. We went with Standard and Poor's and Fitch Rating Services, who the city has historically utilized. One of the things that was actually very different is that Standard and Poor's recently came out with new criteria that they are just in the very initial stages of applying. Um, all of this really is a result of Dodd-Frank and the financial dislocations that happened in the market in 2008. Now the rating agencies are regulated and we're seeing much greater focus on the information that they receive, the depth and the level of the analysis that they are undertaking. So as a result of that, it was really a new process related to Standard and Poor's. And we actually found a few inconsistencies in the way that they had looked at things before and the way that they're looking at things now. But I'm very pleased to report that both of the ratings were reaffirmed, both AA minus with stable outlooks. I'd like to highlight just a couple of comments, even with the new criteria from Standard and Poor's, they, they complimented the city and observed from the city's perspective very strong budgeting flexibility, very strong liquidity, providing strong cash flow levels, strong management conditions with good financial management practices, and that the out, stable outlook is a view of the city's continued strong budget flexibility, strong liquidity, supported by good management. And what I found interesting is in the new Standard and Poor's criteria, there is much more of a focus on the economy, wealth per capita than they have had in the past. And so they do talk about the potential for an upgrade, but they really hone that in not so much to the financial performance of the city, which we've seen that they said is very strong with very strong management, but they really tie it more to the county's unemployment level. So that is one of the benchmark factors that they are looking at. Standard, I'm sorry, Fitch also, uh, talked about fairly stable, um, financial history, strong financial flexibility as evidence in the maintenance of high reserve levels. They talked about the proximity to Mexico and the expensive and expanding transportation network and international trade. And they talk about how your local economy continues to diversify, which is again, very important as the rating agencies are looking at the community. As you, as you focus on this, I think it's extremely important to realize that when the rating agencies are looking at the city of Harlingen, they're just not benchmarking you to other cities in the valley or other cities across Texas. They really are trying to put in place a transparent process by which they are comparing you to cities all over the country. And for them to come out in particular with the comments about very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, strong management conditions, I think that really is a big compliment to the city, to the, to the financial strength and integrity that the city has had. And for them to communicate this, and this is what the investors look at when they make their determination as to whether to invest in the city of Harlingen or not. Um, I'd really like to compliment Mr. Uraina and Mr. Vigno, who were very much involved in the conference calls that we had, and it takes, the, the information that they are asking for now is much more detailed and takes significant time to put together, and they really did an excellent job in that whole process, so I'd like to congratulate them and congratulate the city. We, um, as a result of discussions with our underwriting desk and evaluating the market, we made the determination for the recommendation to pursue a competitive bond sale. Part of why we had that recommendation is right now in the market, there is very little supply, there is not a lot of bank qualified paper, and we felt, just coming back from the whole economic supply and demand, that given the fact that there's not a lot of supply out there, that the city would get an optimal bid from a competitive underwriting perspective versus a negotiated underwriting perspective. And I think that that is evidence in the bids that we received today. On the left-hand side, we show the number of bids that the city received, with the low bid coming from Southwest Securities of a 1.976508. You can see on the right-hand side, the actual bid that we received. Um, I think it is interesting that there is two basis points, our 0.02% difference in your winning bid and your cover bid, and also the difference you have about 16 basis points between your low bid and the high bid. One of the things that is interesting is that when we put together the, the final structure, which we put out on the ICREO, which is the electronic bidding platform that is utilized, we estimated that the rate was going to be about 21 basis points higher than the rate you got. So again, I think that it is the, the supply and the demand in the market and also the credit quality of the city of Harlingen. The bonds that we are refunding were the 2005 bonds. On the left, we have the statistics, and the primary reason that the savings are going to be achieved is as you saw, the rate that we have for your consideration is the 1.97, and we're refunding or proposing to refund, should the commission approve it, bonds that have coupons that range from three and a half percent to four and a quarter percent. The call date on the bonds is February 15th, 2014. So on the left-hand side, we show the savings and we worked on a collaborative effort with your staff in order to target the savings to optimize the tax rate over the next couple of years. And for your consideration this evening, we have the true interest cost of the 1.967, and that generates net present value savings of over $233,000 and for a net present benefit of four, I'm sorry, 7.436%. We recommend that the city accept the bid for several reasons. One, we'd like to point out that when we were before the city commission back in September 13th, we had estimated net present value savings of just under $150,000. And tonight, for your consideration, we have savings of over $275,000. One of the things that we identified also is that in a, it was an extremely competitive bid, that the underwriters discount was $2.10 per bond, so the total underwriters discount was about $6,750, which is extremely low, and I think again, evidenced by the competition. One of the other things, and I think again, this comes back to the credit quality of the city as well as the supply and the demand, we had two additional bidders that showed up to bid on this transaction versus the last one that we had. We, um, in working with your staff, selected a structure that will optimize savings and focus on the tax rate. We want to make sure that we have the opportunity to thank your staff, we know how many other roles and, and day-to-day activities that they are responsible for, but they were always tremendously responsive to us through the whole process, we greatly appreciate it. And we'd also like to just let the city know how honored we are to serve as your financial advisor and how much we appreciate the long-term relationship that we've had with the city. In the book before you, just in case you'd like to see it, we have the detailed numbers. And then we also have in there, um, the information, the two full-blown rating reports from Standard and Poor's and Fitch. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
If, if you could flip to page four please, page four. Um, on savings? Uh, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, $7,000 of savings in 14, 15, 16, 17 and 25. So where are you charging us, uh, to save that money? My question is, would it make sense to do the rest of this where there's significant savings and not do where there's a little bit of savings?
What we did is we worked with the city manager and your director of finance, the option that we showed last time was a level saving scenario, and in this scenario, what, um, in a collaborative effort with your staff, we did targeted savings because there is a slight increase in the debt service when we get to 2018 through 2024. So the decision was made in an effort to optimize the tax rate for the city to target the savings in the years where there is the slight increase in the debt service.
So to do this, what does your firm make?
Okay, our, our cost of issuance, the entire cost of issuance for the whole transaction excluding the underwriters discount, but the cost of issuance are estimated to be about $64,906.25. We believe that it'll actually be less than that, we usually put in a small contingency. Once all the costs of issuance come in, anything that is left over with that then gets sent back to the city. Our fee on this, uh, the financial advisor fee is $18,741.25 with a structured fee of $5,000. Um, I'd like to point out, what is interesting is one of the other things that we have seen with the Dodd-Frank and the regulation of the rating agencies, is that their fees have gone up significantly over the last couple of years. The fee from Fitch is $10,000, and the fee from Standard and Poor's is $7,950.
So you mentioned the 65,000 ballpark number, and then you mentioned other numbers. Those other numbers all add up to 65?
Oh yes, sir, they're all included in the $64,906. And the net savings, the gross savings and the net present value savings are after all of the cost of issuance have been factored in. Those are true net savings for the city.
So my question is, is how much are we going to spend to save $7,000? Are we going to spend more than $7,000 to save $7,000?
No, sir, what, I would say that the way that the costs are factored into it, that differential would be incremental and it would not be, it would not be $7,000. For example, the rating agencies have ranges under which they charge their fees, and so to have had that reduction would most likely not have caused a decline or a reduction to what their rating agency fees would be.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Why do the rates interest start real low and then go up, up, and up, and up?
That's a great question. And let me, I'll show you, let's see. This is what we call the AAA MMD, which stands for Municipal Market Data Yield Curve Comparison. And what this shows is, for an investor, if I'm going to give you my money for just a year or two, I don't expect that high of return. But if I'm going to give my money to you for 10 years or 15 years, I do expect a higher rate of return. And so what this shows is, on the, whoops, on the left-hand side, that's year one, and it goes all the way out through year 20. And so the longer out you go, the higher the interest rate's going to be, because the investor's saying, I'm giving you my money for longer, so there's more risk, so I expect a higher rate of return.
Well, my question is, correct me if I'm wrong, I checked with the Austin and the government have a special rate for the bonds and the straight interest on the bonds. Why we don't get one also rates all year long?
The, they're...
They've got a program.
There are two reasons that the city was able to attract low rates. The first of all is that these are tax-exempt municipal bonds, so investors that invest in these bonds actually do not have to, they're, what they earn in interest is exempt from the federal government. So that's why municipal bonds typically have a lower interest rate than you see for corresponding treasury bonds. The other reason that you have a lower interest rate on these is, there is a program which is called Bank Qualified or Qualified Tax Exempt Obligations. And that is only available to communities that issue $10 million or less in a calendar year. And when you do that, investors get an additional tax break, and that's why they call them bank-qualified. And we have, we have calculated that in this particular market, that's a benefit of about 35 basis points. So the reason that we were, the city was able to achieve the low rate of the 1.97 is, one, because it's tax-exempt, and then, two, because the bonds are designated bank-qualified because the city has issued less than $10 million in this calendar year.
Okay, well, I don't know anybody who would want 1.967 percent interest rate on the total, on this $3.8 million. The bottom line is, is that over the 10, for the living your life, the balance of life of the bonds, the savings is $275,681. I think everybody expects interest rates to go up eventually, certainly within the next four, five years. At least, if I were, if I were to bet, I would be betting on interest rates going up. So I'd like, I don't, so it's, it's nice to see the savings and lower interest rate on this refinance.
Thank you, sir.
We use some different terms in talking about these bonds, but that's really what this was, right?
A refinancing to save money.
Just like refinancing your house or any other kind of loan and asking for a lower interest rate so you can save some interest money over, over the next few years.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right. Are there any other questions at this time? I think I need to ask the city attorney to read the ordinance.
Ordinance authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of $3,215,000 in aggregate principal amount of city of Harlingen tax exemption obligation refunded by a serious 2013, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of an annual labor tax and approving and authorizing a paying agent registrar agreement, an escrow agreement, an official statement, and all other instruments and procedures released there, too.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Still moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, and motion carries. All right, thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight. There's nothing else that's going on. Eight, which is to consider, and also just to say, you know, it really is nice to see our bond rates reaffirmed and to have an independent body review our practices and to come up with the conclusions that they've come up with. I do want to congratulate the staff and everybody involved in the process, including Anne and First Southwest, Noel, everybody. Thank you, thank you for helping us achieve that, that good rate. Thank you. Item eight, consider to take action to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Harlingen Police Department and Santa Rosa and Defense School District Police Department for the donation of one surplus police vehicle to be used for official police purposes. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Eight and nine are actually very similar, and certainly we want to take them together, but the explanation's kind of the same. You know, Santa Rosa, the city has identified a need to have a police department, and certainly those kids are our kids, it's very close proximity, and they're starting up a police department. We have a surplus vehicle that was, in fact, on our auction list that we can't use anymore, and it's still a good vehicle. Anyway, they asked for it, and we think that would be certainly a great use. And again, the next item is very similar, the Cameron County Constable's Office, which, precinct five, which encompasses a large portion of Harlingen. They actually want some push bumpers, and these push bumpers that we have are for Crown Vics, and since Ford no longer manufactures a police edition Crown Vic, we're not buying them, and that, too, is surplus property. So we think it's a win-win in both cases.
Is there a motion to approve the interlocal agreement?
Still move, Mayor. Second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider to take action to approve an interlocal agreement with the city, Harlingen Police Department, Cameron County Constable Precinct Five, for the donation of surplus property to be used for official Cameron County Constable Precinct Five purposes.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve staff recommendation on the interlocal agreement between the city of Harlingen Police Department and Cameron County Constable Precinct Five.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10, consider to take action to approve a list of streets for the street overlay program for fiscal year 2013, '14.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. Each year, the city of Harlingen selects an overlay street that are in need of repairs. Typically, we overlay them with about one and a half to two inches of asphalt. The current streets are about 0.48 percent of the total city streets that we want to pay. Staff recommends that the streets shown on the attached listed map be overlaid and reconstructed.
Is there a motion to approve the list of streets?
Make a motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. All right, we're glad to see our street overlay program moving forward in a positive way. Item 11, consider to take action to approve an ordinance on first reading, signing, and transferring franchise agreement previously granted to One Ok and transferring and signing the franchise agreement to One Gassing.
Mayor, Commissioners, this ordinance merely transfers our franchise agreement from One Ok to One Gas. The company has created a separate organization and transferred or assigned the gas services to one company that'll encompass Texas Gas Service, Oklahoma Natural Gas, and Kansas Gas Service. City Attorney has reviewed the ordinance and recommended approval.
Will you read your caption?
Ordinance approving the assignment and transfer of the franchise previously granted to One Ok Incorporated, determining the ordinance passed in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, clearing effective date, adopting the savings clause, requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Still move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 12, consider to take action to approve a resolution advising the base rates charged by San Texas Emergency Care Foundation for emergency and non-emergency ambulance services within the city of Harlingen.
Mayor, Commissioners, the ordinance that we have with San Texas Emergency Care Foundation, anytime they have an increase in the rates, the city must approve those rates. Randy Quinney, the foundation is here to answer any questions about the increase, and so is...
I have a question. Who pays these rates? Is it the person who is picked up by the ambulance, or does the city have to bear any of this cost?
The city bears no cost. The, if you'll recall here, about several years ago, we came to the city and amended our contract to eliminate any payments by the city, and this doesn't change that. These are the base rates that are charged for different levels of transport care to the patient. The, I think it's important for you to know that virtually no one pays these rates as a practical matter, the, but they are the base rates that are charged, and then they are reduced for Medicare and Medicaid patients, for example. Most insurance companies negotiate lower rates, and so they're reduced for those. Virtually, the only people who might pay the base rates are the private pay who don't, are not Medicare beneficiaries or Medicaid beneficiaries, but probably not very many of them. The reason for the rate change, it produces a little bit of income over the course of the year. And it was necess, we haven't had a rate increase in several years, and it was necessary in order to balance the budget this year so we would not operate at a deficit. As you can imagine, the revenues that come into South Texas Emergency Care have been decreased fairly significantly over the last two or three years because of the fact that we went to all of our member cities and eliminated the contract payments from the cities.
I have a question. Why do you got a special for this, just company over here? Why you wouldn't let somebody else come and make a lot?
Well, the city of Harlingen has, really is one of the founders of South Texas Emergency Care. The city wanted to have a first-class, comprehensive emergency services program in our community. We wanted to have the best that there is in the valley, and we've worked with other communities years and years ago to make that happen. And this is a nonprofit organization that, you know, you have all these other ambulance companies, and they're out there trying to make a buck. These people are just trying to provide good service to our community. And so that, I think, is one of the reasons why we give them the multi-year contract that we're in the middle of. But also, we used to pay them $327,000 a year or something like that. It's over $300,000, and we're not having to do that anymore. So this is a good investment in our community. I want to thank Nathan Winters. Are you the chairman, are you still the chairman?
Yes, sir.
Nathan, thank you for all of your service to South Texas Emergency Care and Bill Astin and all of that. Any other questions?
If I could also just address the Commissioner...
I wanted to tell you why they ask you this question, because that, I've been saying, getting a lot of complaints about the service, the ambulance they're giving, they're getting late to the accident because they taking care of the old people, they, they have to take a transport to the hospital. And that's why I ask you these questions.
Let me address the question that you asked and address that also, Commissioner. The city of Harlingen actually started South Texas Emergency Care Foundation a little over 30 years ago. It is, as the mayor said, it's a nonprofit foundation that operates throughout Cameron County. The situation in Cameron County is that there are virtually, with the exception of bringing patients into Harlingen to Valley Baptist or Harlingen Medical Center or into the hospitals in Brownsville, there are essentially no for-profit ambulance companies that are operating full-time and based in Cameron County. The South Texas Emergency Care serves the majority of Cameron County. The rest of the county is basically served by ambulance services that are operated by the cities themselves, in Los Fresnos, in Port Isabel, and in the city of Brownsville. We had a for-profit operation in Cameron County up until a couple of years ago that operated out of San Bonita. The situation in Hidalgo County is entirely different. And in Hidalgo County, there are no nonprofit ambulance companies. There are, last count, the, last time I looked, several months ago, there were something on the order of 75 private for-profit companies that operate sort of a demolition derby-type operation in Hidalgo County. And the level of service, I have to tell you, is very different. To the statement that you just made, Commissioner, if you are getting complaints about service that's being provided by ambulance companies in Harlingen, I would say two things. One, relay those complaints to Mr. Astin and the people at South Texas Emergency Care. There may be some explanation for it, but if there's not and there is a problem, they will correct it, I can promise you that, and they will address it promptly. There is no ambulance company anywhere in the valley that has response times that are comparable to South Texas Emergency Care. I can tell you that. They meet and exceed every standard that is out there for response times to emergencies and exceed them far and away. The, but relay those complaints to them, let them address them. I would suggest to you also that some of the complaints that you're hearing may in fact be complaints about the poachers that are coming in and operating in Harlingen and not about South Texas Emergency Care, because we do have a continuing problem in Harlingen with the private for-profits coming into Harlingen and essentially, you know, violating the city's ordinance and providing less than the quality care that you can expect from South Texas Emergency Care.
Is that growing?
But, I'm sorry?
Is that growing, the number of poachers?
It comes and goes. I would say that it's not decreasing a whole lot. The Harlingen Police Department has done a good job here in the last, you know, year or so in trying to address the issue of enforcing the ordinance, but we still, we still have a significant problem, particularly with non-emergency transports in Harlingen. And it costs South Texas Emergency Care probably something on the order of a million dollars a year in revenues because of these poachers, and we still have a lot of work to do to address it.
How would you suggest we solve that problem?
Just continued vigilance and the enforcement of the ordinance. And one of the things that, whenever we, one of the quid pro quo's for giving up the contract payment here a couple of years ago was, we included an amendment in the contract with the city that requires, on an annual basis, that the city send a letter advising not only the ambulance companies around the valley, but also the healthcare providers that use ambulance service, of the existence of the exclusive contract and the existence of the ordinance in Harlingen and what the penalties are. And if that letter goes out on a regular basis and goes to the right people and says the right thing, it has a tremendous impact on, on the violations of the ordinance. The problem that we have is, in Harlingen, is there are a number of these companies out there who don't think that the ordinance is going to be enforced, and so they're not concerned about coming into Harlingen. On any given day, I have over behind my office, there's a rehab clinic. On any given day, there may be, you know, three or four companies from out that are not licensed to operate in Harlingen that have ambulances parked there, either delivering or picking up patients. And some of them may be falling within the exceptions in the ordinance because they're bringing in somebody from outside the city, but we know for a fact that some of them are actually, they're violating the ordinance. So we just have to be vigilant about it.
I'd like to say that about 10 or 15 years ago, I was at the Chamber of Commerce at the front desk one time in this winter Texan lady was there grilling the person up at the front about the level of EMS service that was available in Harlingen because she did not want to have her husband, she wanted to know what was available at Fun and Sun because she didn't want to winter, spend the winter in a community that did not have a mobile intensive care unit because her husband had had a heart attack. And that was, that was the criteria that was making the decision... And that was, that was the criteria that was making the decision for where she was going to spend the winter. And so if you don't think it's important to have the very best service around, that's a perfect example of the kind of difference it can make in a community because there are people out there that really want to know what kind of ambulance is going to show up at their door and what they're going to be able to do for them. And so that's, whatever we can do, you know, I'm wondering, the list that, of all of these 75 operators that are in Hidalgo County, if maybe EMS couldn't keep that list up to date and provide it to the city so that, and help draft the letter so that we can assist you in making sure that we keep the poachers to a minimum? Because what they do is they pull down the level of care we're able to give the other people in the community, in our community, and I don't think that's right. I'd rather be picked up by an EMS out of Harlingen than, you know, get run over by the ambulance that's trying to get to the scene in McAllen.
We do provide on a fairly regular basis a copy of the updated list of the licensees and throughout the Rio Grande Valley, not just in Hidalgo County, but throughout the valley. We've been hesitant to help draft the letter because it's, it is the city's ordinance, it's not our ordinance, and we didn't, we didn't think it would be appropriate to.
So the city is supposed to send this letter on?
Yes. And the, the one, the one thing I would say about the, the letter went out last year, it didn't go out the first year, it went out last year. It went to the ambulance providers, it did not go to the dialysis centers and hospitals and the nursing homes and things like that. It should go to them because they're the ones who are making these calls and they're not, we try and make them aware of the ordinance, but they're not always aware of it. The other thing that I would say is the letter went out from the outside law firm that represents the city. It actually went over their letterhead, it did not go from the Harlingen Police Department or from the city manager or the mayor or whoever. And so whenever somebody received that letter, there was really nothing in the letter that indicated why that law firm was sending this letter to them, you know, who's, on whose behalf they were sending the letter or anything like that. And I think that did diminish the effectiveness of it some. I think it's a letter that should go from, on city letterhead, after all, it is advising these folks of the city's ordinance and not some law firm that they don't know who it is or what their connection is with the city.
It's up to the police department to enforce this?
I'm sorry?
It's up to the police department to, to enforce?
Yeah. And they, they, Commissioner, they really have stepped up their enforcement. We've met with, with Chief Whitten several times and they've, they've really stepped up their enforcement. And so it's not, I'm not trying to point a finger at them, believe me, they're doing what they can. And this is a difficult ordinance to enforce, there's absolutely no doubt about that. You don't want your police department stopping an ambulance that may have a critically ill patient in the back. And so it requires somebody to actually, you know, wait until they've discharged a patient and find out what's, what's going on there. So it's not an easy ordinance to enforce. That's why this letter is such an important portion of the, of enforcing the ordinances to let people know. Because the, one of the things that the city did a few years ago when they amended the ordinance was to, to make sure, like most other cities do, that it is not only a violation by the company, but it's a violation by the, the driver and the, and the paramedics on board that ambulance that's violating the ordinance. Because otherwise, you've got, if you've got a $500 fine and, or a $250 fine and that company is making $100,000 a year transporting this patient, they'll pay those $500 fines all day long. It's just the cost of doing business. But if it, if it jeopardizes the license of a, a paramedic or a driver or an EMT that's on that ambulance, then they're going to think twice about wanting to come into the ordinance just because their greedy boss says they ought to do it. And that, Brownsville changed their ordinance a number of years ago to, to provide that the violation applied also to the crew members and the violations went down dramatically overnight.
Well, how can we do that?
We, we have that in our ordinance.
I do want to say that it's a very delicate process and implemented, you know, the challenge is that we want to do it very diplomatically. The police department actually has done a great job and we want to commend it. It's a fairly new ordinance, I know, two years, but it, you know, so we're learning and I think we are in frequent, frequent contact with, with EMS and we're working closely together. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get better at what we do.
Let me also say that the city, each one of the cities that are members of this organization are represented on our board. Mr. Gonzalez, your assistant city manager, attends all of the board members, our board meetings. And so you have an opportunity to have input from both sides of this, which is, again, is a difference with, between us and these for-profits where you don't have any say about what they do or how they do it or anything else. With, in our case, you sit not only on the board, but you sit on the budget committees and, and things of that nature. So you're part of the policymaking of this nonprofit foundation.
I don't want to beat this dead horse, but who's dispatching? If there was an accident, who sends the ambulance out?
That's all done through the 911 system and the dispatch, a call will come into 911 and if it's somebody from Harlingen or another city that we serve, then that, that call gets transferred over to the control center at South Texas Emergency Care.
So these, these, what did you call the rogue poachers? Poachers? These poachers then are being called by private individuals?
Yeah. And the, the poachers are not dealing with emergency 911 calls. They're dealing, they're dealing.
I need to clarify that, right?
Yeah.
And so if I have a dialysis. They're needing to transfer to, to a dialysis center or from one nursing home to the hospital doctor and back and things like that.
That's right.
Right. So if I had a dialysis clinic and I decided to, to contract with, with some ambulance service, then shouldn't we be not only going after the ambulance service, but the person at that dialysis clinic? I know my wife works at a dialysis clinic and they have to deal with that in Brownsville.
The, the way that that is addressed, Commissioner, is, you know, the, the ordinance itself doesn't, it doesn't make it a violation on the part of that dialysis center, but that's, that was the reason for the requirement in the contract that the letter that goes out on an annual basis go to the, to those providers, to the dialysis center. That if they contract with someone or call someone who is other than South Texas Emergency Care, they're, they're essentially calling someone who has no license to operate in the city of Harlingen and they are assuming the liability. If something occurs, if that patient has an incident while they're in, being transported by someone who's not licensed to operate in your city, if they have an automobile accident because they're going through your city and, and have a wreck with somebody in the, in the back, they're doing that in violation of the ordinance. So they've got some negligence per se issues to deal with. And, and that's really the only way that we deal with that is by making sure that they know that if they do that, that they're assuming the risk of operating in violation of the ordinance.
They've got to weigh that against the Spurs tickets that they might get.
Or the pizza or the doughnuts or whatever it is that they're getting.
That's my point. Is there be?
Yeah. We're getting a little field of the item on the agenda. I think we need, we're getting a little far away from the item on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Well, why don't we go ahead and then, and see if we're going to give them their rate change? Is there a motion to approve the resolution, revise the base rate?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
It would be nice to see them work with staff to figure out a way to stop. If our prices are competitive with these other people.
They're lower. Our, our prices are the lowest in the valley.
Well, we need to see what we can do to fix that, I think. I know it's delicate, but I would say, you know, I know from experience, this is completely different.
Yeah, we need to go.
But you can, you can call.
We're beyond the.
The worst is red quickly.
I was just answering questions, Your Honor.
Thank you.
The reason I answered the question for Commissioner Sanchez is because I knew I could answer it faster.
Touche, my former law.
Didn't do any good.
The question just kept coming. Obviously, your answer didn't satisfy.
There were more, there were more questions. Item 13, consider an impossible action regarding appointment of panel to hear the appeal to rise of the decisions of the Harlingen Construction Board of Justice of Appeals. Yes, Ken, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, we have a construction board that the people are appointed by the commission. And our ordinance is really kind of a housekeeping item. Our ordinance says that we have to also appoint three members to provide for an appeal board. And so we're asking you this evening to fill, fill those positions on the appeal board.
I'd make a motion that we appoint, and I think these people have agreed to serve, Kevin Campbell, Eddie Gutierrez, and Adele Clinton Solis, with an alternate of Oswaldo Sosa to serve on the Construction Board of Appeals.
Yes, second.
All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 14, consider taking action to award under rejected proposal for the city of Harlingen Code of Ordinance Re-Complication Project to conduct a legal review of the existing city ordinances.
May the city of Harlingen submitted proposals to do the recompensation of the, of the existing ordinances, really what it consists of is doing a legal review. And the other thing is also looking at the organization of the information and what is done. And not only that, but the online services. So what we did, we received two proposals from, from three companies. That was Franklin Legal Publishing, Unico Corporation, American Legal Publishing Corporation. The city attorney, the finance director, Harvey Kitter, the MIs director, and myself. We met and we reviewed the proposals. And based on the concerns that we have received from the past because of the organization of the material, the way it is right now, and because of the online services that we have, we thought that it would be best to recommend a company with the highest bidder and the highest bid to offer additional software online. And what Unico does is they offer by three or four softwares, is the Mini Pro, which is assist the legal department in reviewing ordinances, not only from the state of Texas, but anywhere within the United States. And also, as in their package, the Uni Dot, which we can send out all ordinances, resolutions, contracts, minutes, and they can be put online. And the public can do the search as far as the minutes. That would avoid a lot of the public information requests that comes in. And the other thing is that they have the code, code bank, which means that they would keep our existing code as a history so we could refer back to it. But online would be always the existing code, the current code. Then they also offer the four bank, which means they keep all our ordinances. Anytime an ordinance is amended, it would show automatically within 48 hours after being approved. So basically, the reason why we're asking that we go in the highest bidder is because of the services that they provide. The other two companies do not provide as much of the online services and we want to enhance it, this is the right to go. The money, we do have the money and the budget, as a matter of fact, it's less than what we have today.
And what is the cost?
The cost is $17,000. And we have budgeted like close to $20,000.
Is that an annual payment or is that a one?
No, 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 this is a one-time thing. The $17,000 is a one-time thing. You will not be doing this probably within another 10 to 15 years. What it, what it will cost us is $1195, $1,195 to keep all this software online. It's a more user-friendly as far as the citizens to search our web and find more information about the city, more transparency.
So, so it's $17,000 plus $1,100 per year?
No, 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 no. $17,000 is one-time.
No, but is there an annual? Is there any annual upkeep?
Annual upkeep is $1195.
That's what I was saying.
Yes.
But it's included in the first year.
Yeah, the first year it's included, but from there after, we're going to have a recurring $1,200.
See, and the other thing, Commissioner, is that the other two bidders don't provide this additional services. So the commission does not approve the new softwares that Mini Pro offers, then you would be paying basically the same thing, $395 per year. But see, we buy the whole package for $1195, it'll save staff time because Charlie doesn't have to go in there and put every ordinance online. They cannot be searchable. And with this software, you can.
Bottom line, this is long overdue and this not only benefit the citizens, but also city staff. I know everybody from the PD to fire and even our code enforcement, so.
Did, did any of you play with the search? Did you refinish?
Yeah.
Did any of you all play with the search engine? Did any of you play with the search engine?
Yes.
And it was, it works good? Okay, good. Yeah, we need, we, we really need this and I commend, I commend for pushing this, getting it in our budget issue.
I make a motion that we accept this bid from Uni.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. I have 15 board appointments. I think I have, I think I have one of the library reappointments. Betty Ferrens?
And the last two, maybe? And the last two were ready.
Well, I didn't, I didn't have my, I don't have my, technically, but last night she told me that she thought she was due for a reappointment and I was.
Oh, wait a minute, the leadership.
I don't think I've ever seen her.
No, I think it was the students from the high school. The students from the high school.
Yeah. Okay, there are two, there are two open on the library reappointment. There are two openings. But we'll do it the next, we'll do it the next one.
I think I commend the CPB and convince somebody to, I think I got my Miss Alice.
Okay, then Miss Alice, reappoint.
Reappoint, yeah.
CPB, is there a motion to approve that appointment?
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 16, citizen communication.
We have Joe Rubio.
Is that the only one? Joe Rubio? Joe Rubio?
Oh, Mayor, come on. You're in a good mood tonight. For the record, I'm Seth Rube Jr., went through the NSC in the road, Harlingen, Texas. I don't, you know, I stepped outside for a while, but I gather that you all approved the money for the Rotary Club, I mean, the Birding Festival and the Playhouse. Now, one of the things that happens is I get this weird phone calls from people, you know, and they want to find out what is right and wrong with the city. And I got one of those weird phone calls. Might as well put the time clock to this, Mayor will be watching. Anyway, I got a weird phone call and they said, you know, did you notice that, at the dog park, which I, you know, I'm all for the dog park, did you notice that the dog park got approved? That they're going to fund it for about $7,000? I said, yeah? I said, well, three of the governing body members belong to the Rotary Club. Isn't that a conflict? I said, well, I'm not sure. I said, whether it is or not, it's a good thing for the city. But those are the kind of things that people are, you know, y'all are on the limelight and people are watching y'all. And I don't know if it was, if it was proper or not proper. You know, I don't know if there's going to be an investigation or if, if I'm going to do a follow-up. But I'm just trying to tell you that, word to the wise, that sometimes, you know, as, as members of another organization, when, when people approach me, they're, they're looking, you know, for ways to, you know, kind of stop you from doing certain things. On the Birding Festival, last year, well, actually in the early part of this year, I discovered that there was $52,000 actually spent on the Birding Festival. Tonight you approved $33,000. So where did the extra $19,000 come from? I mean, who approves it? Well, you know, the $19,000 comes from brochures, it comes from, you know, we actually sent out a couple of people from the, from the Birding Festival board out for, for a nice trip. We sent them out two or three times. You know, and my thing is that, you know, when we start doing stuff like that, again, the public's watching y'all. And I don't know how, $19,000 in excess, I said, I figured, put it in the budget, you know, when you discuss the budget, just say, you know, we're going to have to advertise, you know, the Birding Festival, we're going to have to advertise some other stuff that, that comes in. that comes in for the CBB. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And that concludes our meeting. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye.